My husband and I, and our get behind the counter. So I have heard how I do a lot of that work. And I do a lot of the behind the scenes. I do a lot of favor.
Yeah. Yeah. I work in the top of so much paper stuff this.
So I would like to thank everyone for coming today. This is our second event we're having at the Cava Government Affairs to me. I am your director of government affairs for Cava. And so we're going to start out by giving the host and our food sponsor an opportunity to speak and, you know, tell us a little bit about their business. Everything is new before it, so if you want to do it now, come up here. We're going to make sure that this is available for all of our members who want to participate. It's a very important topic, having people understand, you know, the services and resources available to our small businesses from our county. And I see sometimes we think that they don't care, but in actuality, there's a lot of work going on. Having a communication for me to talk about what is available, I think is great value. So we're going to start out with our host. She can stay house. Katie is going to come up a little bit more. She's at house. And then she'll be greatly scheduled.
You all can hear me, right? Yes. Okay. So thank you, everyone, for coming, especially through our commissioner. We're so excited that you all are here today. Welcome back to those of you who have been here before. Welcome to those of you who have not been here before. PD Playhouse is a non-profit organization who works specifically with individuals and grandchildren, but also with people with other disabilities. So we have 54 locations nationwide. Each one is run by a board member. This location here in Tampa has been here since August of 2018. And right now, we serve over 500 families every day. In the given time, we have one programs that range of all ages that we start with newborns and go all the way through. So our program is teaching law on power and our app. And we do everything from teach our little son sign language, those word skills, language skills, all the way to our adults who read work on sitting skills, character interactions, stop skills, all the things that are important in life, all the important stages of life. So we basically run on grants, donations, fundraisers, and volunteers. Myself and then he are a frequent speaker and speech therapist are the only two paid employees in this organization. Everyone else is volunteer. So our board member Joey is a staff staffer. He's one of our board members and volunteers. So basically puts in a lot of sweat equity, if I like to call it, and asks what's our own volunteers to come in and help us with projects and things. Again, we're just so thankful for everyone who comes, whether you've come to enjoy it, come to volunteer, come to give us valuable information and time, and we're so thankful for that. And thank you so much. Enjoy yourselves and thank you.
I will stop this here. I'm going to stay out. I mean, I was trying to put on my business, and she was the first one to tell me, hey, I'd please. You know, this event, I want to make sure that we're able to get reward and make sure that, you know, these playhouse have the ability that they deserve. Now, what I want to do is I want to thank our food sponsors to have them come out and talk about what they do. So last sheet, American Pub. Heaven, right?
Thank you. So we just had the five month ago. My American Pub, we're off 4:01. We're at 4:50 over by Sunset right behind me. The hotel there. I've been in mine for about five years. There's four of us that started it. We've all been in the industry for a while. We just wanted to do something for ourselves, you know? I'm asking you all to come. So we're having fun with it. We're trying to have fun with it. Love catering, so please, anybody, let us know, especially with Cava. Let us have a lot of fun. I love the Cava dishes. Great work, great work. So absolutely glad everybody knows the double eggs. We definitely do all kinds of things. Everything that we did today is just something that I made up. We've got pos salad arm in, the double eggs definitely are in it. So we can do what you guys want, whatever comes to catering. We will discuss things and figure out absolutely Italian, that's bread and butter there for sure. So whatever you guys need, let us know. Please come and see us Tuesday. We have trivia. Wednesday, we have live music. Thursday, we have a period. So we sit at lunch. Loves it there. We have a frame machine there. So fun for everybody. So come on down and see us.
What's your address of this?
1-8450 U.S. Sports. Compliments.
A 37-year resident in the Tampa Bay area, a few years before left the county commission as a family manager. And we earned a bachelor of science in agriculture and resource technology from the University of Maryland, raised two children, and launched and ran several successful businesses. She is a certified financial planner and former CEO of the American Registered Investment and Fire Company, owner of the Heights Exchange and Lafayette commercial space in the White. She also recreated a business chamber of ours for the Stanford Urban Corps, a longtime advocate of smart planning, economic growth, strong families, affordable community, and the importance of education. Commissioner Oberman has a long history of public service and volunteerism and community involvement. The initial family served on following board three counties, political housing authority board chair, commissioner for human trafficking chair, transportation management for the district, and the other director of the government of the county of the county chair. He was also an early original Chandler Barney Hall, scientific person from the local region. And Barney succeeded commissioner of corporate planning, corporate safety, or maybe company. This is on for the father's chapter, central chamber of council, to represent the community, and the government of the county of the state. You're a long welcome, long octopus.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I forgot to tell you that vice chair is a more dedication too. It's kind of a little more of anything. But yeah, I had a real opportunity to help a lot of those. I ran in 18. I am running reelection in 22. So four-year terms. The board of county commissions is made up of four single-member districts with three countywide districts. And I happen to be serving current community and county wide seat. So everyone within Elsiver County is a part of my constituency. And so I'm very proud to have an opportunity to do this. Businesses, individuals, schools, everybody. County Commission actually does a lot of things. We build land use rules, we do transportation planning. We don't do schools, but we partner with the schools and where they provide funding for the sheriff's office, fire rescue services, water, sewer, trash service, libraries. But we also have a variety of social programs that we put together in order to help economic development as well as help those in our communities to be a hand up. We also manage our healthcare services and our children's assistance. So we kind of do it all. And we partner with the cities for some of those roles. We put together a budget for this area. And we've worked through a lot of positions. And last year, we had two budgets, our budget, our cares. This year, we're putting together three budgets. So our budget, what's left of the cares for this year, as well as the American Rescue Program. We didn't have any else. Like, let's take a little bit of it out. But it's due to the credit of the county and the citizens who are working very hard to make sure that we're getting the information. Website is a great source of information and services. Most of our communication is driven that way. So if you want more, that's probably best to go. But I did want to say thank you very much for this situation. And I want to thank all of you and your efforts to keep our economy healthy this time. I didn't plan on helping, actually, I was trying to office. I would suggest that that wasn't exactly even on the radar, but, you know, we've all worked together very hard to try to keep our employees working, to make it to keep our customers safe, and to keep our economy good. Certainly been a challenging year. And, but we recognized right up front, early on in meetings that we had, we were trying to figure out what we did. You know, we did shut down a little bit. We recognize that was causing problems with our businesses. So we actively work with the cares dollars that we have, developing programs, uncertain community loans that we're thinking about. Federal loans. But also to use our cares and others to provide significant different opportunities after because to help us, to helping small businesses. Many may have a negligence account for the key people. Typically, it was a larger-sized business. And the system's very successful in actually utilizing those to, to help them not only be the business, but also be the business. Unfortunately, I have nothing to do about it. I'm trying to figure out on an app. But in 2022, the county received $256.8 million in cares from the event. And we used that to address many of the impacts that the system's, with the vast diversion public experience as it was to cover. And with that coming, we quickly dispersed about almost $100 million, about $33.5 million dollars out to small businesses in this area. And these were 5,000 applications. So we needed to go through everybody, style, stack out, and call them to survive. None of those dollars were offered to us, helping businesses to do protective measures in the place, in the process, but some of it was just helping businesses. I want to highlight some of the important initiatives that we've experienced here. We spent $35 million in housing and utility assistance, and 6,864 individuals and families serving over 11 million families. So nearly 2 million people is in the community. One thing to be discovered early on is all this destruction caused a serious problem with the community. Not only our properties, our migrant workers, our agricultural businesses, they have moved food services, grocery stores, all of them found disruption in the agricultural business. That then left those communities that have lost access to food and families, where often times the child park and relatives are in the past. And so we recognize we have a major crisis. Health, safety, and security. So we actively worked on installing those packages as well. We've also been fortunate to receive $32 million in federal emergency assistance for a family which is still in place and offers mental assistance for tenants that are in the, in the, in the, now, that doesn't mean they just got home. They had to stay home if they have someone that is, they have, or they have someone that is unable to actually participate. Or they were able to, they had their hours cut off. There are many other things we don't think of on top of saying. So it's important that if you know of any of your, if you're sharing that you have a private management, you know, anyone you know that's having difficulty, they are on these, the health people, I don't know, that's on, but also, so that they have a safe place. And the landlord has to do some things to make sure that they have their, so, well, there is, making sure that the rent is, as low as possible. Providing that those movies are going out, but also timing, people are getting, they struggle, not being able to afford a landlord, because there's, make sure that they reach out to. The family has dispersed all of the cares dollars, those dollars that go in, but our partner, the federal level, continues to ask for it. In addition to that, last year, I got passed, it helps the landlord and to know what they're talking about. And it also sets up in unincorporated, just the prohibition of discriminating against any type of source of income. Doesn't mean that landlord doesn't have criteria in terms of their action, but they can discriminate towards housing vouchers, you know, funds that are available to you. Tenancy, they're out, they pay rent, and it doesn't matter whether it's veterans, other voucher, other voucher, that one, it was called sexual age voucher, that it does prohibit discriminating against that. But it doesn't mean that they can do that much about the most, make sure that they have a complete vision. So that's, that's more to make sure that we're prepared to pass that too. On March 27, 2024, the American Rescue for the New Act was passed, consigned into Austin by one quarter of a trillion dollars that can only be recovered in response to COVID. And counting these portions or allocation for that, and because we're such a large family, and because we have qualified many, many days to be, not only organized, but also capable in benefits of large way, those are families, one of several states, several counties, many states that receive direct allocations for the programs, so not to work through the state nor any debt dollars. So we, so we're actually receiving, of the state, of the government, almost 280,000 dollars that we're in the process of, we're just doing those kinds of help. Those are always more to be guidelines, regulating for some interpretation of what's possible or less than, which ever probably make good progress, but it's kind of sets ranges of where we're going to choose. So I know that there are always rules that you can pass federal, but I just wanted to make sure you know that there's some kind of, and guidance has really been us. As you can imagine, these kinds of funds are great. They are very, might have happened, but they're great. Fortunately, the fault that they're going to be able to do is, effectively. In developing a plan, we were guided by the principles such as focusing on funding projects that are not available to other companies or services. Selecting investments with law, doing impact, while prioritizing the years served and vulnerable community needs, excluding investments with one-time versus recurring operating, and applying sound and transparent to the community. Today's discussion about the benefits of those, our efforts to address the negative impacts, economic, well as our investments in water, sewer, broad-based infrastructure, with an estimated recycled budget, these initiatives add between 61 and 92 dollars for the first half and 86 to another 80 for the second. It relates to the negative impacts in this, family, working to stimulate local tourism through marketing and outreach, spur job growth through restraining, finally stimulate the local targeted business sector recovery initiatives. All right, so. To this end, the Economic Collaboration Center, help me have your opinion. Okay, but they have a wide variety of resources, building 90 partnerships to assist entrepreneurs navigating the system and effecting their appropriate partner to access services that are necessary. For the small business development, it's also a great resource. That's a point that I think is, that provides no cost to the special and one-on-one counseling as a struggle, or remind yourself the challenges, you know, from mutual partner. It provides, we get a lot of help around colleagues, but I just, you know, in some cases, mutual partner. To know that the ECC and partners, but they're very close to this, need access to resources for them, and quickly fit into the same world-class program, virtual, so that you can access that public system. Currently, the ECC is providing both vertical and hybrid programs, which we have the choice. I encourage you to sign up when you see their website. They also do have opportunities to be in the business side, which means that, folks and big business, sponsors, or the first, you know, that might need to appear, that can be working with similar processes or similar challenges. So I encourage you to sign up with their newsletter, stay informed about the governance and things. And also, anytime, all my office, I have a phone number, it's 813-272-5735, or email our office first. Development services to any of the economic programs that are running, any of the social programs, for the, out there, by the tutorial assistance, those kinds of things. So feel free to give my office a call, 813-272-5735. And if you go to the county website, each official site, there's some that gives you the best of us. Please make sure you put your name, your, oh, my first, hey, that right, okay, I'll do it. No information on that, my fact. But that gives us an opportunity to help you, and that's why we're, what we learn in one of these, our, our, our spots, our spots of assistance, that don't have access, we will do that. So tapping into our resources, our having resources, especially in when we have women that, tapping into our resources, we have challenges. And, you know, my side of the, so many of our services are available, have been tapped into, the fact that they have access. Our first blush, that was, we had teachers, oh, this was the first one. Most of our teenagers do not have, these are our frontline workers, houses, they use their, and so the first stage of the thing, the past year, was get with, we have this and random institutions that has our symptoms, in various, various, some of them cannot be picked up. Down in the South County, you're like, I don't know if you need to go, there's, other few virus, there is, so it's really important when you start realizing how it operates, and how we do this, recognizing pieces of our, so dealing with COVID, help us realize paths, and where those opportunities for the free. I also urge you to tune into, for any business enterprise, small business enterprise, NBD, SVP, and, I, or the benefit missions workshop on September 30th. It's at 9:00 AM. You can watch the benefit meetings on YouTube and by searching for the, if you have Frontier, it's channel 22. If you have Spectrum, it's channel 22. As well mentioned, I was, this is, I was a business owner for, as a sort of, I got elected in 18, it's, this is a good job. I don't think people realize that the, it's all racist. So I agree with the, this business to be, partnership to, I actually been looking, I here's the, we also, I guess I'm, and I found a good partner, emerged from that, this, the downstairs nature. So I'm still vice president for two people. Majority of all my time is, it's relevant, I mentioned, I have two sons, four grandchildren, and I'm raising one, two six. So it helped me recognize some of the challenges. It's best when it comes to, you know, safety and security, access to daycare, how do you make this, budget, our transportation. So we're working on all of those things to help, for us, providing businesses, very impressive, now how essential it is to our, I'm willing to offer a fantastic request, and thank you so much for providing the question.
I have a question back there. Um, you said that, you know, we work on block and, people, that, would you, for, you know, constituents, and if so, how would that compete with the, you know, block and, as the, conference?
Yeah, we aren't necessarily one to, okay? We're facilitating legislation to, as well as not all the big ones, yes, to bring some consciousness. But to build the extreme, because what's happened is as much of our county has, you know, we require a certain water and sewer and power, but for many years, we didn't bring it. We didn't bring that, 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 and while wireless is great, huh, it has its, has its bandwidth capacities. So it gives us the ability, which is the partners, that is, or the band aid for this belt, and then sets some guidelines on how, as we develop, do different, to do that as part of that. Sort of specs for our community with the, but in the meantime, what we're also doing is partnering with those, of which, for wireless, and that's the biggest, so, for example, you know, in many of our, especially, yeah, well, but we have certain communities, parts of these, parts of New York, and we're, as well as the large spots of, it just don't have, so that's where we're, in working with partners.
So are there any small businesses that are being focused on? Or need our time? I know it's pretty. You know, our first chance to locate, especially our. So with this new session. But the new funding that's coming into play. Are we trying to focus on those businesses that were partners today? Or is it going to be just hoping?
It's my understanding we're looking for. Because the federal government typically requires resources. And they also require. That if this movement system. Structure. Fire. Be successful. The county still has to provide some structure. To utilize the money. Despite the fact that we love. The treasury makes us also a fair account. So I'm a fair credit. And sometimes we, well, why do you ask all this information? It's really annoying. Otherwise, we don't get money. So the goal here is to make sure that we have those businesses. The two, to help build. Final access. But we recognize small business owners. I know that particularly. You know, for example. The business owners that provide small. Events. Like small artists. So they have pregnant women artists. They were literally. They've never been able to. Open back up at the same night. But they collaborated together. But we recognize those. And they do bring certain. So we look at various different sectors. What? Who's being left out of the. This is an important part of our. For example. Most of our nonprofits. Literally. When they go to their. Many of them. To read. And many of them never. And we need more jobs. That's so that as people get. Office effects. Over happy. The test again. Given their nerves. You know, we need to make sure. Pieces of the economy. That are part of that. You have a child. You have a child. And you need them to be somewhere after school. And you can't find. Yes, well, beautiful. And that doesn't help. Family. Doesn't help community. So yeah, there are areas. But it's not confusion. It's kind of. To make sure that we're best to know. But it's not to say that if you pay for this. High, I've got this. By how many. And this is where I. If you want. Criteria is still. It might be a little more generous than that. So items, laws, or eight words. Their ends. These are actually. So. I am. Yes. Literally, when you ask that. Through our budget. Any of this. The next step is to. Make a rest. And then finish out. And then adjust, redistribute. And that's how we go about finding the funding. Necessary for. Massive deficits. If we can't. There's a rule. Certex failed. In the evidence. On the access. And say. Not those factors. It's not a good decision. It is. We don't have that yet. So. More than likely, there may be something brought back to. Say, how we go about. Because the deficit. To ensure that it was passed by others. Of course. Even with all of that funding, there was still. So I think we can get there. But that's our next sort of. Thing. Over getting people back.
As a hostile county resident who has their business established in Hellsborough. Is my business eligible for these programs? That's something that I want to question because I live in Hellsborough County. I'm a resident of Hellsborough County of my business and where I. My business is based in Hellsborough.
That is a very good question. I know. Okay. I will find out. Do you want to say the next? I, because it's a business application. I don't see why not. But as soon as I say that, somebody will say. So I would rather give you. A real answer. My thought would be that yes. Your business is. Registered in Hellsborough County. Now, that's going to get in their share too. Good as an individual for yourself. Or, you know, mental assistance. But as far as your business is concerned. Right, that was interesting. Last year, when we first got the first round of Fares dollars. It was very clear that, you know, businesses are eligible for these dollars. But there was no provision for non-profits. So at the emergency policy. Talking about how do we get these funds out? And what do we do? What we realized is some of our biggest partners were being able to fuel this kind of. Were nonprofits. Still wrestling with that advice. So we carved out a specific program specifically. So I would assume. But I would assume that people have a similar carve out. Don't mind saying anything now. I don't know that that decision. So just. Because we're in the process of just getting money.
Very good question. So it needs. So there is the website that. It links to some of this. Well, the file C R E search was actually available.
So the website is hillsboroughcounty.gov. And there's a tab at the top that says business. So and on that come up a menu of various. But you'll also look for business loan. And as this, as this program is built out this year. Here's best people. Fares plan. You want to run the Fares. But this is a different level. Federal level. And so we just got the first installment. installment next year that comes in. First installment's coming in. And as soon as those loan grant rounds are fully developed. Will be the other. So if you go to that page and you see business services, you can sign up for the newsletter. And or sign up for the ECC's newsletter. You're going to get notified as soon as. And individuals. For individuals, for the mental assistance. Yeah. Where they get. Fine. Yeah, the term is E R A B. So it's Emergency Rental Assistance Programs. Which includes financial utilities. But you'll also find other services. But if you go to. You can also in the search bar, put in rental assistance. It'll pop right up. If you put in tenant bill rights, that'll pop right up. Because landlords are now required to provide let fire with part of the tenant bill rights. To their tenants. So that's easy to find.
What an interesting. I wanted to use the mic for the people asking questions, just so people. Putting here. However, if everyone talks loud, I don't mean that. Need the mic, so.
And I can repeat the question too.
Yeah, okay, so if you repeat the question, move to your mic.
Is there a deadline for making applications? Or are you to a different category?
Okay, for rentals. The question was, is there deadlines for making applications? For rental assistance and utilities? No, at the moment. And that's really important because the moratorium against pensions just. That, wait, you know, that just got eliminated. So now we're starting to see those starting to pop up. So those you can apply at any time. The, I do not have a deadline on the grant applications for businesses yet. Because the program has not been. But again, I would utilize the newsletter alerts from the county. That filter county authority, some of the alerts. As well as the ECC. Because that's going to be our first place for getting information. Economic Development category on the hillsboroughcounty.gov site. Will be under that Economic Development arm. It's where you'll find the plethora of resources for businesses on permitting, on. Fuels, regulations, on. Ways to do the work of the land use issue. We're actually in. Various different codes. But right now, we don't have the application. Soon as that comes out, they'll. I know, we all know medical have a deadline. They'll just keep passing money out. Typically out works. Because, you know, the deadline is probably not. Which is why the E R A B is still there. It's still have access hours. But this. Of course, there are a lot of people. So that's why I encourage. Nobody bothers to struggle. For landlord is very, very challenged or problematic. You know. Make sure they are aware of themselves. An individual's stability. Once they have an eviction. They're not. They are going to have. Very difficult time. Especially with high rents right now. High price. Bargain values.
Sir, do you have flyers for this? Somebody's meeting for companies. So companies that have medical patients. That sometimes have higher levels.
There is. It's online on the E R A B page. But also, if you look for. So there's two flyers. One is about the E R A B. About the emergency rental assistance. Talks about, you know, twelve months with bad rents. Possibly take three months with prospective rent. Stay a lot of that tenant. The people that are whole. And then also the tenant bill price. It's also online. And they're in PDF. So you can download it to your system. Or send it to a state or office company, whatever. And make as many copies as you want. We have, I typically. Typically, I have a. But it's actually also easy to. So if, because it's in PDF. So if, for example, you have. You know, you have tenants and you have their email and contact information. It's easy to find. So please feel free to call out. That would be helpful. It's for rental. There is a mortgage program. It's limited. But I believe there's still money available all through the screws. Get the same information. At this social services office. That program, the mortgage assistance program. Has to go through a nonprofit agency. And we have nonprofits that we refer. Individuals for mortgage assistance. To assist in helping. Maybe with the payment or the. To make the mortgage catch up. Again, all of, all of these programs are largely. Have COVID related causes. So there has to be some correlation. With, you know, how COVID has impacted. Now, that may be because, you know. Nobody was out buying your property. That's, that's very real. Had to shut down. You know, there's. Again. Call the office. Oh, there's a ticket.
So some basic rule that they did. Pay the money to. The person who owns the rent too? Or do you think of money for the person? For renting? Or compare it a?
When the landlord has cooperated. Question wise, when we have these emergency rental payments. Out of the yet. To where they're supposed to go. Early on, because we were in such a rush. They're rolling on Fares. With Fares dollars. We started requiring the money go to the landlord. Landlord had provided us with information. Obviously, he provided us with the information. Problem we're having is we weren't getting the information. And so this person is eligible. They wanted, they had, they were bound to be eligible. But there was no response from the landlord. Money. This clerk has to have bank account. Has to have direct transit. To be able to do that. And that was holding on a lot of that. After three months of that, we finally started sending. But that didn't last long. Because what we find is that we could see that all of a sudden, evictions filed. And like, well, you know, even if they had to have all this information we asked for. To file the eviction. How come? So what we're doing now is we really are trying to reach out. And we'll call the landlord and say, hey. The money sitting here waiting. And we'll just give us this. I forgot what the form is. Loads of people are thinking. So hopefully, that, that is going to get better. But my office is in the process of developing. What we're doing, which I've gotten, we're just moving. And eviction mitigation and litigation. There isn't necessarily a court statute because. And there are specific people. Oops. That we're still working on. But the goal here is to address that issue. Is to make sure that we're not sending money out to the. Threat. And so we didn't want that. Fortunately, when we went back and checked every one percent, um, the money in record too, they did in fact, there's a difference. Um, so there was a legitimate application, which was a legitimate problem this time, uh, getting the response from the landlord, but the landlord did take money. So, you know, we, we did have to be, definitely, we had to be careful, to get back all of those things. There is all kinds of worries in here, uh, and we are here personally, we've had a great commitment. We've plugged in that has been successful. Oh, doesn't mean we've had a couple of applications, but, um, but we're able to arm checks and balances about that, which I'm very proud of that staff. Um, we've had people run around, their hair on fire, and they are, they are, the problem is we don't have this. Uh, twenty percent of our employees are Catholic. And fifty percent of our employees, it's not long, where they weren't able to come to work for one. And as you all know, now when you've got somebody out, everybody else has to, please, scramble to pick up the work up there, or if it causes disruption, we're not immune to that. So we're recently, one of our working in the firm, they've tested, and if they've already had COVID to provide us the initial, their antibody, they are protected, which is perfect. Uh, we simply had to, don't say into the. Uh, and this was, we were already working on that. So we're still trying to figure out how this all will play out. Right now, all of our employees, and anyone coming to the county. Because even with all the pressure, many of, that, that, and that's, uh, that, that most part of, uh, and now we're seeing, that's why this, very, very, so, uh, so. So it's real. So, you know, I think what we're trying to do as a business, just like, you know, I thought, is to do everything we can to lose, and to encourage, you know, the neighbor and develop businesses. Thank you, Professor. I've been once, I'm sure, we're, one of the amazing social services is rocking, because your program is going out, we're doing, the first set of, of testing vaccinations, first couple of days, this is probably all very, oh my God, it's failing, but we weren't counting on thirty thousand hits. So please just say that it's a little bit, so the first two days, we were scrambled, but after that, we got it. And then we started getting more information from the state. Part of that was just, okay, stay the other running, that's what we get. Uh, but right now, many of the, uh, resources available for testing and vaccination is hard to, we have, uh, and vaccination sites, we have, all that information, that's what I was saying, most, all of our communications, our website, signing up for newsletter and that. And important things.
You mentioned the newsletter, is that the H C N L alert, was that a separate newsletter?
That's, that's the one.
That's the one.
But the ECC, that's a different newsletter, so you go to, um, for the entrepreneurial, or name. Sorry, uh, they have a separate bulletin. Very, very often, since that's majority. Sometimes the news just, uh, top of the headline, which is actually, it is.
So the notification about the front, out of the ECC?
Then you'll probably get a notice, honestly, you'll probably get a, that's why I recommend that. Because you'll get different information. But the ECC is fairly, this is more, so that's a very good question. Uh, any other questions?
So in terms of, um, the, if you're, I don't know, if we, that, I haven't seen, people text.
I didn't open. Can you answer that question? Uh, now, we live in COVID sites, we actually don't have any, that company acquired, and has been, so the county exactly grant that one side. The health department actually does the mobile testing, not, not, on the vaccination services still available, but that's through the department. So if you have, for example, if you have a, and you've definitely, you can reach out to the health department, say, say, vaccinate, have them come to your side for vaccines. So, uh, that services are available, but the more creature, we, we, we need it more. This month, I scheduled partnership, children's aid, um, to all the children who are, to have a vaccine. Um, so we're not only looking parents, some children, but also since only children grow their, uh, health, they want, uh, we're making sure they have, so, so. So, uh, on my, um, I have two flyers on there with all the dates with the children. Like with those, we'll be coming back, except by us, you know, they're allowed to be vaccinated. Those are good. Well, you know, I wanted to get to a place where maybe family, so to make sure that we have that success. And say the line, besides, I actually have to take, but we had to go get information. So I had to approach, you know, Saturday. And what I discovered when I was sitting there watching, I think not all of them, that happened, that, so you really have to, you have to. So if I, or they want to be tested, we're talking about masks, it's, right, so. Six for, that's all, you know, um, but you know, it is, we live in a, but getting an opportunity to get that, thank you, I have no idea what we're doing. Um, fingers I, guys.
Other questions? Do you have one more?
Yeah.
So, like, are you going to sit outside, Tom?
So, um, said earlier that in small businesses, uh, how, how does it find, you said you want to kind of want to work with small businesses, is that by revenue, is that by employees?
It's usually a competition.
Usually, the, the amount of the grant is competition. So free, last time, if I remember, you had, so you had, you know, five employees, you had, you know, fifty employees, and this, challenge we ran into with people, programs is the revenue method base was challenging. Because a lot of the businesses that, in two thousand and fifteen, seven thousand years old, and eligible, had to have revenue, before, I mean, they had revenue, just any of the, before March of two thousand and thirteen, when they rolled out the term there. Fortunately, it passed, so we're not going to run into this at all, as well as our programs tried to wrestle, because we had a lot of businesses, in April of two thousand and eighteen, three years, we had tons of businesses that weren't impacted at all until March of two thousand. They were just like, it's rock. Um, so that period was challenging because we had those businesses, those small businesses, startups, just getting going without any data. Um, fortunately, we couldn't pass that, but to answer your question, it's going to be a question of business size, um, and, uh, it's, 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 it's.
Now, speaking of, I remember, I was working with Mayor, and he said that there's a dynamic where.
Mayor Ross.
Yeah, Mayor Ross. Um, and he said there was a dynamic where, um, barber shops and musicians, they work on ten ninety-nine, they have subcontractors, they're necessary, so when you get to that place in the form, when they ask how many lawyers you have, it's really just you with a ten ninety-nine, and that was something that had to be fixed in, in terrorist group for county. Have those bar counties worked that out?
Yeah, I mean, all of the programs, all of the cities, but whether you apply to the city, you know, it's, it was us. City did a really good job of, about it and getting you all excited, but at the end of the day, you have to. So we had worked through a lot of those. We did, uh, it was, you know, this is random, none of us know about any of this. So the employees that were really running on this program, developing the strategy, was kind of once, uh, run into a, a, that air ball, and it was like. Uh, anything of this. So, you know, it, yeah, really, it jumped up the whole program, right? It's just so much fun, but what we realized and said, okay, well, these are still important entities offering services, and we need, and to have every one of those, um, every one of those contracted employees that apply, it's going to be, so they didn't start working on this. I don't know what it was, but I do know that they, you know, I anticipate that somebody now, serious, next, next, but fortunately, they were learning. Those are big differences. But I, I would tell you, you didn't guys giving us that input, making sure you know about it, like, all your mission, we're going to do a problem, how much work that works. I can't tell you how many phone calls I called to the organization, to their partners, to work, and so, you can't do this. So don't hesitate. If you find in a road law that appears as though there's an opportunity to solve it and you want to get help with that, no, it's always the best you can do. But don't hesitate to come in on this. Find a way that we can operate, we still not, we need rules of edge, so we require proper utilization of the time, um, it's a treasury department, it's, it's, you know, I, I want to be able to, it's one of my goals, not a lot, is, you know, as far as, all of the cities are not, that's why we had, that is my, so my goal in all of our services is to, actually, constituents, and most divisions, they're the best.
Most little folks that you find out, it's like, by the way, this person just last night, qualified for the, and I actually have that, they had, you know, minimum status, but then they have to estimate what the, what the tips are, so, employees, and, uh, well, the example she gave is, is that there may be nights she doesn't get any tips, it's no pay to top, but they always have to do an estimate, so they do it on the overall amount.
On the overall gross receipts.
Right, so they have to take it from the overall, the receipts, the best, this one particular individual, much not actually be getting. So when they're, uh, qualified for the program, or when, when business is paid, or, uh, she gets taxed, uh, that's income on her regular wage salary, you give that tax on ten ninety-nine, the year she wasn't making, it would be attributed, because it goes back a year, the essence, but in essence, what it was, was she, she was getting taxed twice for the same amount, right? It's how it works, so you, it, it's.
That's one of the problems with ten ninety-nine ways, we can't fix that, you want an employer, no, no, best men. But when an employer makes a decision to not take on any responsibility, by contracting that out to, um, there are consequences to those decisions on both parties. Now, if the player can't help, the player doesn't have the security, they did the way it's done, there's not income, there wouldn't, there's all kinds of opportunities to buy. But at the end of the day, if that's a ten ninety-nine employee, the ten ninety-nine employee that isn't necessarily, wasn't necessarily, wasn't necessarily, so, um, if they're estimate, then without getting on the foot, if it's, if it's made, then, then there should have been a, but I, I'd like to, that one, where that, how that works, it's typically that, if the ten ninety-nine employee, we need excess, so.
Other questions?
I have one last question.
Now, please do, we've got a great question.
Um, I think as cabinet leaders, I'm, that you can bring you and this kind of connection to our membership. However, there are a lot of small businesses, like, you know, one of their. A business. Like, how can you get this information out of exactly each bar screen? I know not everyone goes to the bar county website. No one that does.
Oh, you know, like during the early part of COVID, I can tell you, I'm going to be watching this privacy policy, and it's all of a sudden, everybody's walking around developing. I'm like, what's up? I'm just going, all of a sudden, everybody, I'm getting all possible. Hey, I saw you on TV today. No, you are correct. A lot of people are watching. And you can watch me, but, you know, it's just exciting stuff. But actually, you do learn a lot if I'm watching. Planning meetings. Code. Yeah, it's impressive. But actually, because most of our communication. Literally, most of our communications are on the website. Finally, you. Happy the lead. They're on your. If you're looking to get a lot of analysts, manager. Now, send them the link. Our communications department did not stand on. And we've been of business. Private. This is what we found. Who wants to drive downtown with this platform? You know, in the middle of Tampa. Who wants to do that? But you may want to just. So we are going to continue to. And in fact, just our meetings. But you learn a lot about what we. But I would recommend sharing information on whatever. Not only your clients, but also your friends. And in my websites. Things are available. And if you may reach out to our offices. But it is, we are, people know, like I said, we put it there for people. I would love to have. The transportation. They have schools. Has to do stuff. So you could sign up. But. Majority of the various. But. But our communications department, in addition to materials of free and stuff that they put on the website and the books that this is out, is now also required to follow and provide. So, you know, managing a webex, managing. Managing the communication. How we need. How to comment. This is always about comment. Really see this as an opportunity. Say something really nice or that's. Yeah, just to kind of give us an idea of how you. Or just share with us something that we. You can't sell your business on advertising business. But you can create some. But also. Sometimes we have. But there may be. So our communications departments have, I mean, organized too. Reaching, signing up.
So that is philosophy. So we are at, I think it's one of the, I wanted to just say, move this thing. People will come. Mission because it was a great meeting, I think. I love a lot. And you have a lot of. Thank you very much. Thank you everyone for coming.